All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. So you want to make your way to your seats. We'll get started here in just a moment. Go ahead and make your way to your seats, please. That'd be great. And just for the candidates, before we get started too, the candidates for the seat four race, as these guys are getting close to the end of their race, I'll grab you guys and we'll kind of walk around backstage and be ready for the transition from between the two races, okay?
There's a green room.
There is a green room. No beverages or snacks, though. We'd have to consider that an in-kind contribution, and we don't want to do that.
Concessions open.
Very good. Welcome, everybody. This is the Citrus County Chronicle Candidate Forum for the City of Inverness, and we are so excited to be able to do this. My name is John Murphy, and I'm part of the Chronicle leadership team. I handle digital strategies for the Citrus County Chronicle. You know, for over 130 years, we've been providing news and content for our community, those important stories that matter to our community. And a part of that process is certainly educating citizens on folks that are running for office. For more than 40 years now, we've been doing events just like this, some version of a public forum where we invite candidates to the stage to be able to hear and so that folks, the constituents, can be able to hear directly from those candidates. So here's how tonight's gonna work. We have members of the editorial board, as well as our executive editor, they're gonna ask questions. Each question that gets asked, a candidate will be given an opportunity to have a two-minute response, and then we're gonna also alternate who gets the question first. So if Mr. Labriola gets it first, then the next question Jackie would get first, that sort of thing, and kind of rotate that way. At the end of the question period, the candidates will have an opportunity for a two-minute closing statement. And as I said, we have two races that will be featuring tonight, both for the Inverness City Council. On the stage right now, we have seat two candidates, and that's Jackie Heffer and John Labriola. And then the next go-round, when we have the next candidates up here, that's gonna be the seat four candidates, and that's gonna be Karen Estee and Thomas Craig. So with that, I'm gonna give you also some instructions on how this is gonna work. We have some folks from the Chronicle team down front here, and they have these big, bold, obnoxious signs that you guys should be able to see. One is gonna be yellow, and it's gonna say 30 seconds. And then the other one that you hold up, that they hold up, will say "stop." That's right. Good job. There you go. Jackie, you need one of these at your meetings, right?
Yeah, I do.
So, and when the "stop," be cognizant of that, right? Otherwise, one of the moderators might have to kind of cut you off at the knees, and we don't want that. We want you guys to have a, fulfill your thought that you were gonna say, and then kind of move on from there. So with that, I'm gonna invite up the executive editor of the Citrus County Chronicle to begin the question period, Jim Gavallis. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you coming. I asked each candidate if they'd like to be referred to as Mr. or Mrs., or their first name, and all of them have graciously offered to let me call them by their first name, so thank you. So, and actually, Roger's gonna ask the first question. Roger Krieger is a member of our editorial board, former police chief of Crystal River, city manager of Crystal River, and a whole bunch of other things.
What has motivated you to run for the city council? If elected, what would be your three top priorities? Jackie?
Thank you. Well, what motivated me is what did from the very beginning, way back when. I love the city. I grew up here. This is my home. I raised my family here. We retired here. This is it. My top three priorities are, I still am very interested in affordable housing and seeing the RV park through that we're planning with the state. It is state property. And just keeping the small-town image the way we want it. We control growth, not, we have no plans for condominiums and all this massive everything, and as long as I breathe, that won't happen.
So, first of all, I just wanted to say, our thoughts and prayers are with all the victims of Hurricane Helene across Citrus County. And my name is John Labriola, and I'm running because I feel that the city, the city needs to go back to small-town conservative values, small-town conservative values. I feel we've moved away from that. My three top priorities are to cut taxes. The city cut the millage rate by one-tenth of one mil last month, but that's still 5.5% above the, 5.5% above the rollback rate, which means people are paying more taxes as government is growing. I think we can do better than one-tenth of a mil. And I do believe that we should stop approving more residential, higher-density residential developments. I think if the master plan says a certain thing, and the developer wants to move in and build higher density, I think we should say no. So I feel like we need to move back to a small-town conservative values. I think the, I think spending $55,000 to attract LGBT tourists on a DEI program is an inappropriate use. Not, that was, the Tourism Development Council wasn't specifically the city, but my opponent did that, and I feel like that's an inappropriate use of taxpayer dollars. I would, I would use the money from the Tourism Development Council to replenish the scallops and invest here in Citrus County and not attract certain, certain demographic groups.
Next question is for John. Recently, some citizens have requested that the city adopt resolutions supporting controversial national or state political issues. Would you support or not support the adoption of such resolutions? And could you tell us why?
I think you're referring to the request that a number of residents made to adopt a resolution to oppose Amendment Four, which is the pro-abortion amendment, and I definitely would support that. A number of cities have, and counties have done that across the state, including Gilchrist County, Collier County, Lee County, Sarasota County, the Trenton City Council, Hialeah City Council. It's just, the list goes on and on, Homestead City Council, I can't name them all. But I think it makes an important statement, and Mayor Place had actually agreed. Unfortunately, the council didn't go along. But I think it makes an important statement that we are a conservative community. We do not want pro, we do not want an abortion amendment enshrined into the Constitution to give, you know, people the ability to abort all the way to the ninth month, and that's with taxpayer funding. So I'm against Amendment Four. I think, I think the city council should be willing to make a statement when an issue like that comes before us that was put on the ballot by Planned Parenthood and outside groups, that we are a conservative community, and support the governor in saying no.
Thank you. Jackie, do you need me to repeat the question?
It wasn't a resolution. We were asked to do a proclamation. That is not what the City of Inverness government is supposed to do. What the state puts on the ballot, we have no control over. We could scream our heads off, we could protest, we could do everything. It's on the ballot for November. I'm just encouraging people, vote your conscience. I am voting against it, but that's Jackie. Jackie has no right to tell everybody, you gotta vote the way I do. Everybody, that's part of being American, is freedom of choice. So people, if it's very bad, then the people are gonna vote it down. That's what it amounts to, and it is not city business. I was not elected to get into a spit and match with Tallahassee over what's on a ballot.
It actually wasn't, it wasn't Tallahassee, it was Planned Parenthood.
Do what?
It wasn't Tallahassee, it was Planned Parenthood.
Our time's up for that question. Thank you.
After allowing carryout beer and wine in the city's downtown entertainment district, the city council voted by a 3-2 vote recently approved carryout alcohol in the entertainment district. Do you agree with, disagree with, the majority vote and why?
I didn't hear what you said, who you said. Yes, the, we tried having beer and wine outside in the entertainment district. This isn't running hog wild through town with a glass of beer. The glasses are marked and identified so that you know it stays in the entertainment district. There have been no incidents. I don't see any law enforcement here, but they were, they have said they hadn't had any fights, brawls, arrests, nothing coming of it. It's people having something to drink with their meal. People, the citizens, this was citizen and business-led, requested to let them have a mixed drink because if you drank beer and your wife wanted a mixed drink, she'd have to stay inside the restaurant, and you could sit outside with the rest of the family. So we decided to give that a try. And again, if we're not promoting drunken wildness, it hasn't happened. And again, if I don't drink, and I voted for it because I don't believe I have the right, there is no more prohibition, so people are going to drink wherever they are. This better controls it.
John?
I disagree with the decision. There were a number of people that came to that meeting to disagree with changing the alcohol ordinance to allow hard liquor. So the current ordinance allows, well, I guess it changed already, but the previous ordinance allowed beer and wine in the open container provided by the city for events that take place in the entertainment district, which is downtown, and the council voted 3 to 2 to open it up to hard liquor. I think that takes us away from the small-town done right. I think, I think at the very minimum, they should have said, okay, let's make it up for a short period of time. But I think that was timed specifically for Cooter Tober. There is events like the zombie, the vampire pub crawl, and I think that was designed to give them an opportunity to have hard liquor. And I think that whole, the vampire pub crawl thing is another example of something that's not in keeping with small-town conservative values. I think we should go back to the one-weekend Cooter Fest and not do the entire month of vampires and haunted historic, the historic courthouse. I think that's inappropriate, especially when the historic courthouse is supposed to be the preserver of our history, and we're actually distorting history by saying there was a witch trial there, which there wasn't. So I would have, I would have disapproved that ordinance.
Next question goes to John first. John, the motto for Inverness is "small-town done right." What does that mean to you? And do you believe city officials are adhering to that motto?
Actually, I don't. I feel, well, it's, it's a motto, but it's a political slogan. I believe we need small-town family values, and I think we have moved away from that. When you're bringing in, when you're spending $74,000 or $100,000 to bring in outside people to come have a party in downtown, most of the people of Inverness are not actually benefiting from that. It's taking tax dollars and it's spending it on a party for outsiders that is not gonna benefit us. We have our own needs. We have roads that need, you know, paving. We have a lot of needs here in Citrus County, but one of the main needs that I've seen going door-to-door and talking to people is they're, they're concerned about their costs going up. Inflation is really taking a big bite out of their pocketbook, whether it's the, you know, whether it's food, whether it's, whether it's gas. People are suffering right now, and I think it's incumbent on the city council to ease some of that burden by giving more back to the, to the city residents and not trying to attract a whole bunch of people in from out of town, you know, on a party that may bring in, you know, people that don't, don't share our values, let's say.
Jackie?
Thank you. To me, small-town done right is what we're doing. We listen to the residents. Again, I question all this sudden shock and horror over Cooter Tober, which last year was not an election year, nobody paid attention. Thousands of people came, and most of them were from within Citrus County. They enjoyed it. They said, please, do it again next year. It was family-friendly, and, you know, we offer things for everybody. Not everybody has small children. They enjoy, like, the pub crawl, as they call it. And if you have children, why in the world would you be bringing them out at night to drag them to a bar? You should have better sense than to do that with your children. Same thing for the children's activities. A lot of people don't care for that, but we offer that too. So we do, we listen to the citizens, and they enjoy these things. The majority of the things we put on the events are free, so it's not costing anybody anything, and it gives them a break from their daily routine, and they can say, hey, let's go sit in the park with the kids and do this. So I disagree, because we do listen to the people. We have been, I've been listening to the people for 26 years, and they have been happy with what we're doing, and if that comes to where the residents are, not people from other side of the county are unhappy, we listen, and things can change. Nothing is written in stone. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an easy one. Do you consider the restored Valerie Theater and relatively new depot pavilion to be assets or liabilities for the city?
They're assets. We're using this tonight. I came here, and some of the members of the audience, we came here as children. This was our, our life on the weekend. We sat in here and watched the double feature on Saturday, and if you were lucky, you got to stay through it twice and, you know, meet all your friends. It was, it was a great thing to do, so I'm very happy with this. And we wanted more arts. That's what the people of Inverness said, we want more art, more plays, different things that are people-friendly, family-friendly, and we're doing that. We have, we've got school groups using the Valerie and the different radio shows. Things going on here are definite asset. The depot, I don't even know where to begin. Just the market that we do alone every other Saturday has grown into some amazing, amazing produce, products, local people, and two of them we know now have gone from just starting out there, did so well, they were able to open in a brick-and-mortar. So it's a launching pad for small businesses. We don't charge for them to be there. It's a wonderful thing, the different events held there. From the day we got it finished, the first, first spring it was finished, we see all these kids, they were all coming down to get their prom pictures taken with the lake in the background down at the depot and at the park. So anytime you have anything open to the public, there is a liability, because you do have people that are gonna go, oh, I broke my hand, I'm suing the city. That's gonna happen, but as far, to me, the good and the wonderful things that we're doing with both places far outweigh the liability.
John?
I agree that those are two very good assets to have. I would just say that, like, if we're gonna do Valerie Theater performances, let's just make sure that they're family-friendly and avoid some, some of the issues that we've had with some of the performances that we've had in the past. But I definitely agree that these two, these two things are definitely major assets for the city. I do agree that we, we definitely could put more of that kind of emphasis on restoring the assets that we have here in Citrus County. I think that's a good use of taxpayer dollars. I think the, the other stuff that we're bringing downtown, some of the stuff is not appropriate, but I would say I would agree mostly with what my, with Jackie said.
You just say she. What she said.
Here's a semi-related question. John, you get the first question. Do you believe that religious concerns should be a factor when allowing citizens to utilize city properties such as theaters or parks?
Well, I, that goes back to what I said before. I'm, I'm not gonna go into a specific about what performance I objected to, but there were a couple of, you know, performances that I felt were inappropriate. I just think we, we are a fam, we are a small-town conservative family-values place, and we should make sure that those, you know, Elvis and, and, you know, family-friendly activities, family-friendly entertainment should be our emphasis, and there's plenty of, there's plenty of family-friendly entertainment that we, we can provide here, we should, and I think that's basically what our emphasis should be.
Jackie?
We have, that goes on all the time, and nobody calls, you know, calls it out or makes a big deal out of it. We've had weddings in the park, we've had sunrise services in our parks, we've had part of being Americans, freedom of religion. I practice, you practice, we all have maybe the same, maybe different, but it's not up to any one of us. We don't have the right to criticize anybody else, and we don't have the right to push our values on them. It is, the Bible's real clear about that, and I think most people feel that way. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, and we haven't had any problems.
Thank you.
Jackie, what special skills do you have to offer the government process?
Knowledge of how the government works. John, my opponent referred about spending money on Cooter Tober. That is, we leveraged money that was given to us by the federal government, basically grant money. That paid for that under the entertainment. There's many assets of government. We don't just sit at the meeting and go, oh, here, let's read this. You have, you study it, you learn. I have a lot of contacts in other agencies. I understand what it means to be in office. It's a heavy responsibility, but you do it to the best of your ability. If you're wrong, you say you're wrong and move on. If you're right, you say thank you, thank you, Lord, and you keep going. I have a, I love people. I think the biggest skill, and I don't know it's a skill, is my love for Inverness. I can't stress, daddy was the chief of police, mom worked for the sheriff. We, everybody, when we were kids, everybody knew everybody. If you did something dumb on one side of town, you were in trouble by the time you got home, because everybody knew it. And that, it's still basically that way. It's, the electronics and everything have changed that, but knowing your city and knowing the people is a far cry from just coming in and saying, oh, this, this, this. Oh, I, I listen to the people, they all know they can call me, they stop me in Winn-Dixie or Big Lots or wherever I am, and I'm accessible. So I guess loving people in town's my best skill.
John?
So I think you were asking, like, what qualifies me. Well, I'm a graduate of University of Florida, journalism graduate, but I've also worked, I was a president of a very large condo association, one of the largest in South Florida, which gave me experience in terms of, you know, voting, voting on boards and also voting on budgets and things affecting large communities. It was, it was the largest condo association, one of them in Florida. So that's one of the, one of the areas where I think I've become qualified to do what I'm doing, what I'm doing here. But in addition to that, I've worked in government as well, and I've worked on the side of the, lady, please. I've worked on the side of, you know, doing the, the public relations for Miami-Dade County. But one of the things that I think really has prepared me for this is, I am currently the lobbyist for the Christian Family Coalition, and that has gotten me involved in front of large groups at Tallahassee. I've lobbied the state legislature. I've done a lot of grassroots lobbying to county commissions and school boards across the state. So I think that has definitely prepared me for, you know, being an effective county commissioner now. My opponent mentioned that the, the Cooter Tober was paid for by, by COVID funds, which is correct, but next year, they're not gonna be COVID funds, and it's gonna come out of the general fund. So I feel that needs to come back into, you know, helping the owners have some tax relief and bringing it back down to, you know, cutting taxes instead of spending more money on stuff like that.
First question goes to John. Are you satisfied with the state of the city's infrastructure? If yes or no, why? And what would be your top infrastructure priority?
Well, the, there are a lot of city, a lot of areas of the city that are, don't have roads. Now, that's a big issue because, you know, cars get a lot of wear and tear on their tires and stuff, so that's an area where we could probably look at. And I know that that might lead to some issues with the, you know, special assessments and stuff like that, and having to do with, you know, special taxing districts. So I don't know to what extent the city could be involved in that, but I do know that the residents just feel like a lot of the needs that they, that they have in the city are not being met, because a lot of the money is going to downtown events like Cooter Tober and things that don't really bring value to them personally. And so I would just make sure that we, we very carefully look at the budget and how the money is being spent, be conservative with it, make sure we look at every line, and, and not just let the managers tell us, hey, here's the budget, let's look at it. I would look through that, I mean, I would take a fine tooth comb and look through every item in that budget, and make sure that every, every penny is being well-spent, and the money that we don't need goes back to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Jackie?
Okay, same question.
Yes. Want me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Are you satisfied with the state of the city's infrastructure?
Yes.
Yes or, okay, well, there you go.
Yeah. We just got finished paving miles of road just this summer in areas. We don't just sit there and throw darts and go, hmm. We have consultants that have, they graded on like ABC or 1, 2, 3. They graded the levels of bad roads to okay roads to good roads, and we started with, obviously, the worst roads first, and we have a plan. The money does not come, we don't take road money to do Cooter Fest. That's part of understanding how the city works. Monies come from different funds that we have to do them. Some of the, like, water and sewer is, it's an enterprise fund, excuse me. You can't take any money out of it for anything else, and you can't put money into it from anywhere else. It has to come from the usage. So, yes, we're doing everything we can. A lot of the roads are in a mess right now with the state, and that's not done, but we are working on infrastructure. As far as the unpaved roads, assuming you mean out-of-independence, we, this has been coming up since my first, first week on the council, I think, and we had worked out a plan then. It would cost them about $38,000, a lot, and it could be paid off at $10 a month on their water bill, and the residents said, no, we don't wanna pay for it. So we tried way back then to help these people. Obviously, we can't just pave their roads and nobody else's when we didn't, when we, other people paid. Thank you. I see. It's hard to see the sign. I can't see anything.
You two have lived through a grueling set of questions, and now it's time for your closing statements. And since you had the last answer, John, you get to do your two-minute closing statement first.
Okay, well, thank you all for being here. As you've heard, I'm running for Inverness City Council because I want to preserve our community's small-town conservative family values. I believe our council has stopped listening to the residents. I've sat through council meetings where well over a dozen residents bring up a topic only to be ignored. My opponent, I feel, has been on the city council for too long, 26 years is just too many. I think she has kind of lost touch with what the residents really want, and the city is getting too congested, and it's losing its small-town charm. So we need to stop increasing residential densities and leave our master plan alone. I strongly disagree with my opponent's vote to spend $55,000 on a, to attract LGBT tourists to the community instead of families. Our leaders should be willing to pass resolutions that, I mean, our city should be willing to oppose, oppose Amendment Four. We should be willing to say no to abortion supporters that wanna, you know, continue to march down the lane of killing babies. We, but we didn't, you know. We should be willing to put the manger scene on city property. We remove that to avoid offending atheists, but yet we're spending a whole bunch of money to, to bring, you know, vampires and nonsense to the city. So I think that that's a misuse of taxpayer dollars. I've been going door-to-door, and I've heard what people want. They don't want, they don't want their money wasted, and if I'm on the council, I will bring back conservative family values. I also, by the way, I forgot to mention, I spear, I personally spearheaded the successful effort to end LGBT pride displays in our Citrus County libraries. And I led, and I, yeah, and I also led the push to cut the counties' ties with the American Library Association. Those are two other things that I've done here in Citrus County. So I want, I want to make sure that Citrus County preserves our conservative values, let's stop overdevelopment, cut taxes, and protect families, children, and the values of this community. Thank you.
Where do I begin?
Let's, let's start with the Christmas, the manger scene. These are taken directly from the city minutes. Anybody can look these up for themselves rather than just spout, and I'm reading this. City manager Di Giovanni was asked by Councilman Wigmore why the manger was removed from city property. He advised the city was previously guided by prior legal counsel that the Supreme Court of the United States had ruled on this issue, and we recognize to respect this law. The council didn't do it. We questioned it. We wanted it left there, but legal said, you're paying me to keep you out of trouble? Listen to me. We've been open to having it back. I know for a long time they did it at the courthouse. We did it ourselves across the street at the church when the church was there and at the house. Then again, on the other part, we have, we're not having any huge developments coming up. We're not planning any. We're not messing with our master We're not messing with our master plan. But my opponent feels that we, over on Colonnade, we have the low-income housing, which I think is a beautiful building. The, his thoughts on that were that if you bring in affordable housing, you're changing the demographics of Inverness to something that's less desirable. And trust me, it's less desirable because I came from an area that's overwhelmingly democratic. I grew up in South Florida and those areas are high crime. There is a moral degradation when you have Democrats that become the majority. We don't want to change Inverness into a Democrat majority or a purple area because that brings down property value. That is not a small-town done-right value. I, I welcome everybody. I have friends who are Democrats. I have friends who are Republicans. I have friends who are independent and no party. They're still my friends. I got to hurry. I'm running out of time. All I can say is the people do. I listen to, I talk to them. I'm not out of touch with them, and we are doing small-town done-right.
Thank you. Okay, next, thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Could I ask the audience to refrain from booing?
Collected, what would be your three top priorities?
Well, coming from South Dade and the Redland agricultural area, I was very active in our community. And I think community is extremely important to foster and to keep a community together. My activism down, and plus, I brought those skills up here to Citrus County, actually the city of Inverness. And I, I would enjoy being part of the council. I think I have leadership skills. Coming from Miami-Dade County, I represented the, what was called the Redland Citizens Association. There was a, it was an association that was established in February of nineteen sixty-three. And their goal was to protect agriculture, water, the ecosystem, habitat, and Everglades National Park. So, I worked very hard and since nineteen ninety-two until I moved up here in two thousand twelve, that was what I did, and I loved every minute of it. So, my skills that I have brought from South Dade, I would like to sit on the board and be a part of the council and, and to continue what the council is doing today and the city of Inverness. And the three things, right now, I'm working on one, and it has to do with FDOT, which is the Florida Department of Transportation. And I've been, the board I sit on is the Citizens Advisory Committee for the MPO. And I've been wanting to get a sidewalk. I know I got thirty seconds, but anyway, I've been trying to get a sidewalk on Independence for such a long time, and I'm finally getting some headway done. So, I think possibly, I know government runs very slow, but I think at some point we will be able to at least get a sidewalk in on Independence so the kids can, and people who can walk can go from Whispering Pine, Whispering Pines Park all the way to forty-one, and they don't have to walk in the grass or out on the road or anything. Thank you.
Thomas?
Yeah, I moved here almost ten years ago. My father lived here since two thousand six. I came here trying to figure out what I was going to do, and I got here and I fell in love with it. I'm from a small town. We had the Appalachian Trail. We had the CNO Canal. I biked, I hiked, and I got here, and boy, we can do it all here and more. There's so much wonderful stuff to do here. And the small-town atmosphere is the same as what I grew up with. I work at the local pharmacy. I like helping people. It feels good to help people. I've been working all my life. I have sold one business for five million dollars back when I was in my late twenties and then went around advising business and got hired by one of my customers. So, I've got business experience, running up to twenty-six retail stores all around the country, doing the financial and negotiations. Recently, I was invited to join the Small Business Association's Entrepreneurial Business Assistance Program. It's the SBDC, the Small Business Development Council at the University of Central Florida in Orlando. I got there and I found that I really loved that. It was just excellent. So, I, I have the credentials to be able to do this. I want to do it. I want to protect and maintain and promote our city's character and charm and the attributes of small-town done-right. It's, it's where I moved to, and I want it to stay the same for myself and for the next twenty years at least. So, when the seat came available, I said, now's the time.
Tom, next question's to you first. Recently, some citizens have requested that the city council adopt resolutions supporting controversial national or state political issues. Would you support or not support the adoption of such resolutions and why?
By adoption, you mean?
Like vote for it.
Well, the city is the city. I mean, we're a city and we're in the county and we're in the state, but the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over federal, even state laws. So, I would say I wouldn't adopt anything that's not jurisdictional within the city's job. I think that people have certain convictions, of course, about things that are happening nationally, but we're here to do the city's job, the city's work, and we're here for the people of Inverness. And Inverness is small. A lot of people think they live in Inverness, but they actually live in the unincorporated Inverness. So, we have a lot to do here, and I think we're doing a great job here. I, I want to join a winning team, and I like what I see, and certainly, things can be done better, but I like what I see, so.
Karen?
I have to agree with Tom. This is not a, a city issue, and it is a proclamation. We have no jurisdiction over what our legislators have set forth and what the, what the public is going to vote on. Everybody has an individual opinion in what their causes are and what they feel is right and wrong. So, therefore, I, I would not suggest to the city or even go to the city and ask them to pass this proclamation. We can't speak for the citizens. Everybody has their own decision to make on this, and that's how I feel about it.
Thank you.
After allowing carryout beer and wine in the city's downtown entertainment district, the city council voted three-two recently approved carryout alcohol in the entertainment district. Do you agree, disagree with the majority vote?
I agree. The entertainment district is just a special place for people to come and gather, to have fun, and we have such great entertainment down there. We have concerts on Saturday once a month, and it's important to realize there are thousands and thou, one time, we had like six or seven thousand people. And to say again that you're going to only allow beer and wine, you are going to get just as sauced on beer and wine as you are going to be with a, with a mixed drink. So, it doesn't, you know, it behooves people, and it also helps the businesses. There has been no issues downtown with anybody going around getting sloppy drunk or anything that I know of because I frequent it at a lot of the festivities that go on down there. So, I happen to agree with what the, the city voted on. I think it's fair, and it fosters businesses and it brings people together, and they don't feel like they have to hide in a corner somewhere, you know, or, or to alienate somebody from being inside and from outside. So, I, I agree.
Thomas?
Yeah, I would agree that business is the most important thing in the enterprise downtown business district. And if they're keeping that kind of alcohol permission in this city, we, we can control it. It's in an area. The police have already said that they have no real issues with it. And we have to remember, this is not forever. We're not stuck with it forever. It can be reversed. So, if the experiment is successful like it was with beer and wine, then our citizens are handling themselves well. I met, talked to somebody, seventy-eight years old, and she came down to Inverness and said, there were thousands of people, and there's this band called Linda Skinner, and I love that. I love inner Inverness. I felt safe. I, I, I want to come back. There were thousands of people. I love Inverness. I, I don't think that it's up to us to decide. It's, if it's good for the businesses and it doesn't hurt other people, then let's let it go for a while.
Tom, the motto of Inverness is small-town done-right. What does that mean to you personally? And do you believe city officials are adhering to the motto?
For me?
No.
Oh, Tom?
Yeah, you got the first question last time.
Sure. Well, it is what it says, small-town done-right. We are doing everything right. The people who live here like the way it is. Some things that we're seeing coming down the road here are things that may affect the way that our town exists in the future. So, we want to maintain what we have. We want to maintain the small-town done-right. It just, it means charm. It's a charming town. It means a walkable city, riding around in a bicycle. I met a guy while I was canvassing and he said, you see that pickup truck over there? I can't remember the last time I used it. I go everywhere on my bicycle. That's a great town. Let's keep it that way. The festivals, as I said, people, thousand, seven thousand people in downtown Inverness and not one altercation. And a seventy-eight-year-old woman says she feels safe? That's what a small town is. And that's what we should continue to think of when we're developing strategy plans and, and all the things that the people want, continue with it. It's, it is a small-town done-right.
Thank you. Karen, you need me to repeat the question?
No, sir, I'm fine with it. When I first moved here, I realized that I had, had moved to a very special place. And it, it took just a very short time before I could be familiar with the charm and the history of this, of this city and how friendly people were. Coming from Miami-Dade County was just a complete one-eighty. You know, when you have some people opening a door for you and saying, yes, ma'am, no, ma'am, and, and that tells you the values that are in this city and how fortunate people are to be able to live and work here. The, the, what the city does is it fosters, it fosters everything for every, for everybody, actually. If you go to Whispering Pines Park, you're going to see thousands of kids out there having a ball. You know, they're playing baseball. There's a pool over there. They, they have wonderful activities for every type of age group. Then you go over to Whispering, then you go over to the depot. There's, there's so many things going on all the time. You have teen night. They involve everybody in this city. And if there was anything going on that was inappropriate, believe me, the council, the mayor, and everybody else would know it, and they would try to make changes in that. But again, the, the people here are just awesome, and, and I appreciate living here, and thank you.
The easy question again.
Sure.
Do you consider the restored Valerie Theater and a relatively new Depot Pavilion to be assets or liabilities for the city?
Oh, it's absolutely an asset. The changes that happened in this, in this Valerie Theater since I've been here, I remember when they first opened it and they, they had done renovations here, and they were just showing movies. And then all of a sudden, you, you've had these, these troops come in and they offer such a variety of entertainment for everybody, whether it's for kids, adults, it's plays, you have all types of everything that goes on here. I've had the opportunity to come here a few times, but I think this is, this is a venue that people can really foster and have such a great time with, and the caliber of talent that comes in here is just incredible. So, I would encourage everybody, if you haven't had the opportunity to come to this theater, the acoustics is wonderful. That's one thing I listen to because I love music, is listen to acoustics. So, if, if you do have the opportunity to come and enjoy everything here, you really should because it just has such a, an array of entertainment that would just far reach everybody. So, I agree. The Valerie's a wonderful asset to the city.
The depot?
The depot? Oh, the depot. You've got, you've got the farmer's market over there. You have teen nights over there. The farmer's market, when I first came here, used to be downtown city out in the parking lot. So, and now look where it's at and look how much it has expanded. So, if you have not had the oppor, and plus, they have a farmer's market on Wednesday nights now, twice a month. So, you have either daytime on the Saturday or, or for working people, you get the opportunity to go at night and browse around, and then from there, you can go to the businesses and have dinner, so, yeah.
Thomas?
Well, I've been a lifelong artist and art director. I'm running the Inverness Arts Fine Arts Festival coming up in November second and third. And so, I love art and culture. And of course, this is the best venue you can have because it's rebuilt. It's not new construction. It's what small-town is, preserve your past and looking to the future with all the new kinds of entertainment that's going on here. And I'm an outdoors person. I hike and bike. I've written three books about trails, hiking, biking, and paddling. I love outdoor events and the Home, the, the Home Depot. Yeah, I was going to say the Home Depot.
Well, you're close.
The depot district incorporates just about everything that you need in life. I mean, you've got the water there. You've got venue for what we heard last night in the city council meeting, a world-class sculling, rowing event going on. We have concerts, and again, there's thousands of people. Someone told me, oh, you got to get down there early because you won't get a seat. And, and everybody's enjoying themselves and there's no problem. And then we've got the With the Gucci State Trail Bike Trail, which I'm on the board. Thirty seconds.
Goes fast.
It's just, it brings people together and it directs them to spend money with our local businesses. It's, it's excellent, great part of the city. But you missed the Whispering Pines.
Tom, do you believe that religious concerns should be a factor when allowing citizens to utilize city properties such as theaters or parks that we were just talking about?
That I don't understand, to utilize.
Should the city decide what kind of plays take place in?
Based on religious beliefs?
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, I think religion is, is really important. I went to a school for seven years and went to church six days a week for seven years, and I was born a Methodist and I went to Sunday School and did all of that. I learned how to dance at the Catholic Church in our small town. Religion's great. It's, it's just, it's, for me, it's personal. It's a personal conviction. I don't push religion onto other people. So, you come to a town and, and say that you should not use this theater for acting, just doesn't make sense to me. Acting is acting. It's, it's not necessarily always what everybody thinks it's going to be, and it's entertainment. I don't see that, I mean, there is such a thing as separation of church and state. I'm not really sure if that applies here, but, you know, if you don't like something, don't go and see it. Don't do it. But I like church and I But I like church and I go to church and I've been there more than most people I know. So you know, it's, I'm not against religion, I just don't think it has a place in determining what other people should do.
Thank you. Karen?
As far as the entertainment here in the Valerie Theater, that's exactly what it is. It's an entertainment. It's not trying to project or change anybody's mind on how you should believe or anything. It's all acting. You see it on every stage throughout America. I've been to plays in New York, some really funky plays in New York, but they don't change my mind, it's just sheer entertainment. And you just can't say, "Well, it's a religious thing." And as Tom said, you have to decide on what you want, what your own entertainment is. It's just like watching television and the movies that are on all of these stations now, all the streaming stations. You decide what you're going to watch, you decide what's best for you, what's best for your kids. They do wonderful things here for children, too. So, and they don't, they don't allow, it has nothing to do with religion. Now, I do come from a family of pastors. I have three pastors in my family and I'm very proud of them. And they would do the same. They don't go anywhere where their values or their decisions that would make, you know, make them uncomfortable. That's how you do entertainment, you know? You just have to decide what you want to go see. If you like horror movies or horror plays, then you come here when there's one playing. So, and that's how I feel about it.
Thank you.
Karen, what special skills do you have to offer the government process?
The government process for the city?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Well, let's see. I have a long list. Are you ready for this? I need more than two minutes. But anyway, when I was in Redland, I'm going to start and I'm going to work my way forward to where I am today and get this all in two minutes. I joined the Redland Citizens Association in '92. I was their zoning representative until I moved here in 2012. And that encompasses, you have no idea what that encompasses, as far as going downtown and representing to preserve agriculture. It's a massive amount of responsibility. In addition to that, I was appointed to Miami-Dade County's Planning and Zoning Board. I was on that board for one year. And then we made decisions on all the zoning through Miami-Dade County. And again, you have to be attuited to what's going on in land use, which I am. I enjoy land use. Then our association, the Redland Citizens Association, we started our own newspaper. It was the Redland Country News. And it started out with 100 copies. We got it up to 9,000 copies. And that was because we were trying to incorporate Redland as a city. And we tried for six years to make Redland the first city that we've ever known. And that was a massive, again, so all of these times. And then I was put on the Miami-Dade MPO and again. So now when I moved up here, I started going to the city of Inverness and I said, "Okay." So now I am the chairperson of the City of Inverness Planning and Zoning Board. And also, I am the vice-chair of the Hernando-Citrus County Citizens Advisory Committee. And that, we make decisions and those decisions go up to the MPO for long-range transportation planning and funding for all the roads. So I think I'm pretty qualified.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What special skills do you have to offer the government process?
Well, two years ago, I ran the campaign. I was campaign manager for mayor and I got to learn firsthand, meeting everybody, the way the political process works. I wasn't really interested in politics before and running a race is a political thing. Doing the job is a whole different story and that requires somebody who likes, understands the facts, deals with the facts, doesn't take their personal convictions into play when it comes to deciding what, to make what laws to make for the people. It's not, it's not for us to decide. Our job description as a city council member is to work for the people. I've owned two businesses, one $5 million, another $22 million. We had 7,000 customers. I worked with thousands of police departments all over the country with the program Drug Abuse Resistance Education for DARE. I managed, negotiated 26 retail stores, leases, negotiations. I've done a lot of work throughout my career that is pretty much the same as it is what we do in government. Decide what is right for the people and make sure it's fiscally responsible and 30 seconds is up. Thank you.
Tom, are you satisfied with the state of the city's infrastructure? If so, or not, why? And what would be your top infrastructure priority?
I'm satisfied with, generally with the state of the city's infrastructure. We have an all-new downtown area with the Depot. We have, roads were paved this summer. There's going to be another four miles of roads being paved and their decisions on what those roads were going to be were based on smart criteria. I think that because I ride the trails and I kayak and write books about being outdoors and I think that one of the things that's important these days is intermodal transportation, e-bikes, bicycles, a walkable city. I think that we could do a little better there. There's, I mean, I ride the roads and you're out at Pritchard Island and it's not a pretty sight trying to drive into Inverness on a bicycle. We could build a few more trails, but the state has given us a lot of money for that. And we've got FDOT that's paving miles and miles of the Withlacoochee State Trail, which is $62 million of revenue to this, to the areas around the Withlacoochee State Trail. I mean, we have great stuff. This trail is one of the best trails, I think, in the world. It's got cover, you know? Most trails, you get burned in the sun and it's just a wonderful place. Infrastructure, they're doing water runoff, which is important to keep the pollution out of the lakes. We've got a really good infrastructure. We can always do better. And believe me, I'll be there. I like nature and I like safe roads and for our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
I must say that our Public Works Department in the city is top-notch. They go out and they determine what needs to be done. They look at every nook and cranny that has to be done. They have done such a fantastic job making sure that the streets are safe, what needs to be done, potholes need to be done, roads have been, new roads have been put in and there's more to come down the road. They've also done, as the infrastructure to prevent flooding in neighborhoods. It's, you know, a lot of people, they say, "Well, you know," but government has to move slow. You just, you know, you can only do so much work at one time and yes, there are needs. And when people come to the city and they say, "There's a need there," the city is right on it and they'll send somebody out, take a look at it, and if it's a very serious need, they will handle it right away. The other thing is, I'm going to go back to my sidewalk on Independence and it was what the city did, which really, I thought was kind of neat, because I'm always, I can't say that word. What they did was the apron coming off of Forest Drive, it segues right into Independence. And I think it's going to be a wonderful thing because our city manager, Eric Williams and Frank, he's working with FDOT and also because it's part of the county to get this sidewalk in, everybody's working in conjunction to make this happen. And I think it's going to be a wonderful thing for people to be able to have the sidewalk and that's just another infrastructure that will be in place when I get in office. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Now's the time for closing statements. And just remind everybody to be respectful in your reactions. If you don't like a candidate, booing won't make them go away.
I won't go away.
Yeah, we're here to say.
But voting will.
Yes.
Vote.
Okay. Karen, your two-minute closing statement.
My two-minute closing statement. I would look forward to being part of the council. I think it's, they have such synergy right now and they understand exactly what the needs are of the people and they listen to the people, that I've noticed. I have a very diverse background in a lot of different areas and I think when you bring those skills together, the one thing I didn't mention is, my husband and I, we had a flight school out at Opa-locka Airport and I did get my private pilot's license, if you can imagine SD flying around. It was quite an experience. But then again, this is the business side of me and I understand, you know, crunching numbers and making sure things are done and done properly. So, and then again, having come from Redland and knowing the importance of being part of a community and making sure you do things for the community is paramount. And with the city, I feel that the city has really done a stellar job in making things happen for the city and the people. We have such a vast amount of entertainment. We have things, the businesses are thriving. As a matter of fact, just recently, on the Planning and Zoning Board, we just brought in more property, we annexed more property for Nick Nicholson so he can expand his business. We've, on our board, we've brought in more businesses. So the more business you bring in, the better it is for tax dollars, not only for the city but for the residents of the city. And I would really look forward to being part of the council and listening to everybody. So I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for hosting this forum to the Citrus Chronicle and thank you to the Valerie Theater for providing this venue. This is a great place. Oh, also, thank you to my fellow citizens here and, I was going to say on the internet, but later on the internet, for being part of the solution. Like you, I'm interested in where the city is going and how we're going to get to where we want it to be tomorrow and in the next 20 years. Many decisions are required to protect the lifestyle we like and we've got a lot coming down the pike. I've lived in places before that had nobody, no tourists, 500 a year, and now they're Miami Beach. And some of the city councils have made decisions that have caused that. And we can, we can control certain aspects of this onslaught of tourists and housing developments by smart growth, balanced growth. I believe that an acceptable balance of nature and community qualities may be achieved with the right people on the city council. And that would be me. Responsible management, you know? My business partner and I, when we got out of college, started with nothing and we had to be fiscally responsible. I will be. My support for mom and pops businesses, like I was, combined with the love of nature and conservative spending, will be steps to protect our community, family values. So let's work together to bring strong meaning to "Small Town Done Right" and I pledge to protect, maintain, and promote our city's character, charm, and attributes of small town done right. Thank you very much.
Well, that concludes the forum tonight. Thank you all to all the candidates for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
We know that it's hard work to run for office and we respect what you do and thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. That was good. Good luck.
Good luck.